Okay, we're live, be careful.
They're getting on our money.
They're really coming.
There's only three singles.
They're, uh, sorry. Well, they're, uh, they're holding off into one, uh, three freshmen. This is for, uh, it's, uh...
I was, uh...
I think they'll be okay.
Well, not really.
It'll be a rebuild there. Which I guess they're playing all the games away, that can be good.
How are you?
Are you fishing or racing?
I don't want to descend up.
Fishing?
I don't know much. Every time you say it, I'm from you.
First Tucker Pinnegras, go look at Roberts. You boys maybe brought the front?
Yeah.
They said it was the first four, but they're excited.
Hey, you boys gotta make a speed, don't they, though? Them boys gotta make a tile.
He thinks he can finish that speed. He's preaching for birds.
Y'all be for birds.
They're, uh, they're... They might, they'll go to talking about fishing, and we'll have to separate back to pitch.
Just give us tips, we don't mean to speak. Speaking for myself.
Uh, they're from, like...
Hey Tucker, just about four, five minutes, I gotta talk. You gotta talk more about... I said Tucker's gotta talk more about...
You got this.
Lucas, you're gonna do at least five, too.
You can take ten from a good solid team every week.
Yeah, eight, eight minutes.
Do you know that I did the sci-fi? I swear, I think the last one I made is that I did the sci-fi.
I thought we don't have any race plan.
We're gonna have, we're gonna...
Oh, I have the white race line.
Wait, what, I have the white race line?
Screen last year, maybe.
Could you all touch that too, right?
Wow, that could set you for me to be...
That is cost, that's the way it costs.
Yes.
Uh, Don, he's gonna be out of town for, uh, September tenth, training.
That's why I was saying, it's late, Mitch, I'm sorry.
I just gonna miss that meeting, 'cause I'm, like, fourteen, I was gonna be in Peach.
If everybody, if everybody will be just a minute, I'm trying to give, uh, Mr. William Ashton just another few minutes here before we get started. Things I would like, and will be a great start.
Oh, thank you very much, um, I'm, uh... I came to draw a...
That means Tucker has a lot of long... We might want extra time, I'd say. Lucas, well, you gotta talk about it. Is my name on that shirt?
Probably not, you gotta pay money for it.
I did pay, I did pay money for it. I'm giving mama money.
He's checking, yeah, he's paying his taxes.
There it is, there it is.
There you go.
As long as we'll be the right, you can see it.
Mr. Dodson can't sweep anything but these boys are fat chicken.
Okay, guys, since everybody's here, we'll go ahead and get started, uh, with the exception of Mr. Ashton. We will go ahead and call the August the tenth, twenty-one, Overton County School Board meeting to order. Uh, the opening session, moment of silence, be led by Mr. Mitchell Stonecifer, the platoon's agents to follow, by Ms. Alice Reed.
If they will join me, stand over observance of a moment of silence. Thank you.
Let's pledge allegiance to our country's flag.
I'll pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, we'll need to approve the minutes from the July the thirteenth, twenty-one meeting. Those minutes were supplied in the package for your review.
How did we, President?
Motion to approve those minutes by Mitchell Stonecifer, do we have a second?
A second.
Second, by Mr. Bruce Hudson. If there's no discussion, all in favor, please indicate with a saying aye. Any opposed? Approval of the August tenth, twenty-one, uh, meeting agenda, uh, does anyone here on board have anything to add, or to take away? So if we could get a motion to approve this meeting agenda?
I'd like a motion.
Motion by Rick Dodson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Wayne Taylor. All in favor, please indicate with a saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, this month, we have no executive action items that need to be approved. We've been to consent agenda items. Uh, under the consent agenda, no one has any objection, we'll approve all these at once. Uh, approval of letter of resignation from Miss Nina Carter, instructor of Livingston Academy, a letter of resignation from Mrs. Chastity Key, instructor of Wilson Elementary. Letter of resignation from Miss Heather Melton, letter of resignation from Angela Chapman, letter of resignation from David Pritchard, a letter of resignation from Mandy Lover as a cheerleading coach at Livingston, or at Allen's Elementary. Uh, that's for cheerleading now. A letter of resignation from Lisa Harris, a letter of resignation from Ashley Ogletree, a letter of resignation from Lindsay Van Winkle. Number ten is a letter of resignation from Brian Rooker. Under the consent agenda items, is there a motion to approve those consent agenda items, one through ten? Is there a motion for that? Motion by Wayne Taylor, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Ricky Dodson. All in favor, please indicate with a saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Ashton, we're on the consent agenda. Uh, Williams, so far, um, no executive action items, we just went through the consent agenda. Would you like to vote in favor or, um... Under the new business items, uh... My knowledge, or... I don't think they're... Let's go over number one separate, uh, depending on, depending on what it is, we may have to have a vote for it. If not, we'll, uh, approve all those together. So, uh, number one on the new business item is consider a contract amendment for co-architect for the instruction and infrastructure needs for the ESSR funds. Uh, does mine, or do you, Dr. Holman, have that information?
Yeah, so, so, uh, basically, all it is, is we've got the contract for the football field now, and since we're doing some infrastructure upgrade, uh, with the ESSR money, the HVAC units, um, let me just kind of recap real fast. So, ESSR two point oh, uh, I met with Dr. Holman, Miss Johnson, and the architect. Uh, the first time we put the bids out ourselves, uh, they come back anywhere from four hundred thousand to seven hundred thousand, that's about a three hundred thousand dollar gap, and, uh, there really wasn't no consistency and, uh, spec meetings, and it was awful on all the bids we got back. So, uh, we just kind of grouped them together, since they're already doing some workforce anyway, uh, to kind of help us lead, uh, the bids on all the HVAC units. Uh, ESSR two point oh, there's some tile work that Miss Johnson's put in that, uh, I think it's every single school that has carpet is gonna be removed, and tile put in.
That's three schools, three schools in the center hall?
Yeah, so four schools. Then, ESSR three point oh, um, there's a certain percentage of that that can be used for infrastructure as well, uh, so, ESSR three point oh, uh, we're looking to do it for the new roof at, uh, Allen's, the new roof at LMS, uh, and classrooms at Rick, uh, build on for classrooms there. So, uh, since we had that infrastructure in there, they'd already done the workforce, basically, we're just amending the contract for them to do that workforce as well. That may change, depending on, the state comes back and says, yes, they'll approve this, or they'll approve that. Uh, the units for two point oh, we originally had thirty-three down, we pulled that back to twenty-five. The reason we did, because we're not gonna put the four on at LMS and the four on at Allen's, because if we're gonna do the roof anyway, there's no sense in putting four units on, turning back around, taking them back off, then putting a whole new roof on. So, ESSR two point oh will be twenty-five units, removal of the carpet and tile in the four facilities. ESSR three point oh will be the new roof at Allen's, the new roof at LMS, and the classrooms at Rickman. Uh, talked to him today, depending on the budget and the dollars that kind of come back, and we'll have to adjust that as we go, so, I know it was long to get to the explanation.
So, that amendment is just for them to handle that bidding process?
Yes, right.
Okay, um, so, question?
Yeah, my, my question is, um, is it, is it because it's easier for us to allow them to do that, or do we think that they'll help save us some money in the long run?
Well, both.
Using their experience to deliver a better price?
Both, because, uh, number one, uh, personally, me, sitting back and looking at all the bids, I couldn't sit there and tell you if they met specs or not, um, and, you know, that big vast majority of three hundred thousand dollars, um, I could say, yes, this is cheaper, but I don't know what we're getting out of it, or anybody, I don't, you know, Dr. Holman or anybody. And based on their knowledge and the work that they've done for us in LA and the roof and units they've done, I'm sure they can get a better price on it as well.
It's my understanding they're a member of a consortium, so when they put those bids out, it goes, it goes out to a larger, much broader area than when we put it out. Okay. So hopefully, we will be able to get a better deal on it, and he can help us to make sure that we're comparing apples to apples.
Okay. Any other questions? So, uh, approving this will just be, uh, amending that contract, we don't spend too much of this time. So if we could, let's just, uh, all these, uh, new business items, we'll approve all those together. Uh, number two is consider approval of LA senior cheerleaders to participate in varsity spirit, United Cheerleaders of America, eightieth anniversary, Pearl Harbor Memorial Parade. In a Wahoo Hawaii, that's a good one. Wahoo Hawaii. Sure.
I know that's not typical, but we typically don't run over to Hawaii real quick and anything like that, but, but this, this trip is a real honor that our students were invited to go to that, and also, Vanessa Ferris has told me that there will be, uh, that the, the money issue with this has been worked out, that the parents of these, of these children, the, the majority of the parents of these children are wanting to go with them, they're wanting to make it a family thing by going, they're excited, they're, they're wanting us to know that that won't be an issue. If there is any issues, Miss Ferris and I have talked about that, and we're gonna, uh, we may do some things, some, uh, fundraising things here to help in areas where there might be some need. I don't think the money will be an issue on that for us.
Consider approval of LA volleyball team playing following tournaments, uh, in August in Knoxville, uh, September third, and fourth in Chattanooga, and night through the twelfth in Gatlinburg, uh, to my knowledge, that's other, uh, extra tournaments, uh, I've asked for all the twenty-one, uh, requests. Number four, approval of twenty-one, twenty-two Carl Perkins original budget, um, I don't have a copy of that with me, that was in the packet, uh, and that is, that is what we were prepared for, for next year, Carl Perkins as the federal budget. If anyone has any questions over that, we can answer, uh, to my knowledge, there's just a, uh, it, it's our basic, uh, how do you say this, uh, staff development. All else is incorporated in that, that's, uh...
Our CTE program?
Correct. But that'll be our budget for twenty-one, twenty-two school year. As of right now, there are a big number revisions that will be later down the road as we move money. Uh, twenty-one, twenty-two title two A revision, that also was, uh, in your packet, that is a revision, uh...
And that's staff development?
Yes, uh, that is just, uh, moving money for staff development, the budget itself's not changing, it's just shuffling on, line item to line item. And number six, uh, consider, uh, first reading of policy five point two oh five one, which is the retirement, uh, buyout incentive. We've talked about this before, our actual parameters for a buyout. Uh, TSBA has drafted and developed a actual policy for that, so, uh, going forward, we'll have a set timeframe that that is to be reviewed by, uh, the director, uh, and there are stipulations, there has to be so many taken about, it has to be beneficial to the ball group. All that information was supplied in your packet, uh, if there's any questions over that, we can go over it, but those stipulations are the same stipulations we had this, this year, which were the buyout for.
I need a copy of it.
Okay, all right, no problem, um, how about that? Uh, it should've been sent, you get your stupid email?
Yeah, there wasn't any.
Okay, no problem, um, it has the same incentives as what we just paid out, it'll take seconds, we can review it if you like. Uh, what it breaks down to is every four years, a director will review that. I know some thought three was too soon, some thought five was too late, so every four years, uh, that's a happy medium for the board. And that gives the, uh, gives the director direction as far as timeframe, and actually planning for employees to retire. This isn't set in stone, if you guys wish to change dates or anything of that nature, uh, it's to be bubby, but, uh, as of right now, that's through the TSBA, we had their, uh, attorneys, uh, review and draft that. And the next will be, uh, five point three oh two one, support personnel leave, uh, the only thing changed on that, that's just updating that policy, the only thing changed is, uh, there's two sentences, uh, added, uh, one is under the, uh, salary personnel, two hundred sixty days support, and the other's under bus drivers. There's just a, uh, sentence of at-time of retirement added to each of those paragraphs for those different classifications. That's the only thing that's been added to those, uh, the support personnel in the policy. It's the same sentence in both paragraphs, it just, it has to apply to both sections, so that's why it has to be incorporated, two separate paragraphs. So, anyone have any questions over that, or anything we just went over in the, uh, new business items?
I'd like to see a table that's by outfield, we all discussed that together.
Okay.
I like for this table.
Okay.
I mean, we, we can approve the first reading, and it's not official until the second reading.
Okay, that's fine.
So if there's any issues, it can be changed before next meeting.
Uh, well, uh, I'll tell you what else, uh...
And if it doesn't go on the next meeting's agenda, then it will pin there until we do the second reading?
That's correct. So we can do our, we can do our first reading, go over it in the, uh, this work session coming up, and go ahead and finish it, that will be on the next meeting.
Yeah.
All right.
It'll be eleven, that's...
Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
All right, so, uh, if there is a, uh, motion to approve the new business items?
Motion.
Motion by Miss Alice Reed?
Second.
Second, uh, Mr. Mitchell Stonecifer. All in favor, please indicate with a saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Give me just one moment of that. Okay. Now, for our special recognition, we have the, uh, a few members from the LA Anglers team, uh, Lucas Roberts, Tucker Pinnegras, are here with us, Mr. Brandon Cross, uh, coach for the Anglers team. Dr. Holman?
I've got a little something I was gonna read here. Um, this past season, the LA Anglers had two teams to qualify for the best master high school national championship at, on Lake Chickamaq. Bryson Carwell and Andrew Riggins also qualified, but were, they were not able to go, they were seniors and they had, they had other plans, you know, so they, they, they chose not to go. Qualifying for this tournament is a huge honor. Uh, Lucas Roberts and Tucker Pinnegra, Tucker Pinnegras qualified for the national championship by fishing a lot of tournaments all across Tennessee, and placing well in those tournaments. Uh, they have also fished tournaments in Kentucky, Louisiana, and Florida. Once the team was told they had qualified for the tournament, they were only given two days to practice and develop a game plan on the new lake. The boys were successful each day of the national championship and placed in the top half of the field. There were three hundred and nine boats from forty-three different states represented. There, these are the absolute best high school student anglers from all across the United States, and we are extremely proud of these young men. Uh, also, their boat captain, Sam Pinnegras, and I will say, Sam has really gone a boat beyond as, as a dad and a supporter, uh, as well as, uh, as, uh... As well as Mr. Roberts as well, uh, and the, and the way that, we're extremely proud of these boys and how they've represented Livingston Academy and Overton County, uh, in the national championship. Uh, both boys have already stated that their goal is to make sure that they qualify and get back next year, and here's my favorite sentence in the whole thing, is this, besides being really good anglers, they're both great young men. I've known them since they were little, since kindergarten, and super proud of both of them. Uh, we are thankful for these, uh, boys and all the LA Anglers for their great representation of, of their school, and their team, and their sport, and their sport, and their county. Boys, we're really, really proud of it. If y'all would come forward with their coach, with their coach, uh, Brandon Cross, we'd, we'd like to, we've got a little something we'd like to give you.
And while we're on the topic of the Angler team, uh, Mr. Cross, how long has the Anglers officially had a team for Overton County schools? Do you...
We have fished for seven years, we've officially had a team for six, the first year, we kind of fished as a club. Uh, we started with four kids seven years ago, we went to six that first year, this past year, uh, Mr. Hicks, we had forty-four kids. We're still building the team right now, we will September, but it looks like we're on pace to have forty, forty-four kids again.
And while Wayne has that camera on those students, if you can see all that writing and all those graphics, that is how many sponsors the... that is how many sponsors the Livingston Academy and Middle School has for their angler team. And it's several, that's, it's a big score, it's bigger than most people around here realize, so...
We, we are blessed. Last year, we had ninety-three sponsors from here local. This year, we're still kind of in our sponsorship drive, but we, every year we've had it, we've been really blessed with great sponsors, and these boys, we, they couldn't go fish where they do without it, we couldn't do it without the sponsors, and it's, it's really amazing.
One, one thing I left out, the other, Brandon, you can correct me if I'm wrong, the other coach is Matt Johnson too.
When we started coaching, he made a bad decision and said if I'd go to the tournaments, he'd do all the paperwork and the behind the scenes stuff. He made that deal, but he, he does a lot of work for our team, and we appreciate Mr. Johnson, he's, he's a great player.
That's what I wanted to say too. We appreciate him too, even though he got the dirty end of the stick, we still appreciate him greatly, and we have a little sentence for him to split with them.
Next, OCEA, we have Ms. Allen here with us.
Hi there, gentlemen. Just welcome back to a new school year. From what I'm hearing, across the county, we're off to a smooth start. The teachers are reporting that they're very happy that we're getting back to normal school year after last year's strange school year. And just hope everything keeps moving as smoothly as it's been. We should have a great year. Also, welcome back to sharing Crystal, we're glad they're back.
No one has anything else?
We have.
Yes?
I just wanted to let the board know that when me and Crystal were going over the new pay scale, we did find some discrepancies in there, formulas that didn't carry over. So we will get those fixed and get those to a copy, a new copy of the pay scale next time, so we'll show the updated pay scale and all the changes there. None of them are really major, but it's just a little bit that didn't carry over in the form.
Alright. Now, will that be something we'll need to vote on whenever that's, with those changes?
The changes that we made, that are gonna have to be made is one of them, when we made the motion for the vote, it was that we were gonna give all power professionals five cent. So that will be included in that, it didn't carry over in the formula on some of the bus drivers. So we've got to fix that, and then another thing that we had mentioned was that we didn't want to take money away from anybody. Well, we found one of the positions that when it's ran through, it's like fifteen cents shy of what it would be. So we just got to fix that.
Okay, very good. Very good. Anything else? If nothing else for business, we have a motion to adjourn, the...
I'm gonna make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Dodson.
I think.
Second, by William Mapp. All in favor, please indicate with saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Anybody need to take a break, or one of them just continue? Alright, first thing we've got on the work session is, Mike, thanks guys.
Thank you, boys.
First thing we have on the work session is a reopening plan. I know school started Friday, this was not sent out to everyone. Dr. Holman was waiting from, I guess the CDC, the Health Department, just kind of in case anything changed. He didn't want to present this to the board last month, and something changed in that timeframe where we would have to go back and, I say we, he would have to go back and correct those issues. So, he's developed a plan for reopening.
And what I, what I did to develop that plan, I took our coordinated school health person, Jimmy Smith, and I utilized Marcy Matthews, our, our registered nurse for the county, and we spent a lot of time looking at other documents and what other counties around us were doing. And we took all, everything we could gather and made our own, one that we thought was, was best stood over in county. And at the time that we sent the packets out, it was just the one page. But I have in your, in your packets, it actually turned into, I just wanted you to have the supplemental material that went with it. So, in your packet, there's actually three more pages that go along with it. I think it was, it was in your folder, it was in the folder that we gave to you today. So if you want to look over that, you're welcome to, I'd like for you to see that, see what all we've done. I feel like that, that, I'm pretty confident in this, I feel good about what we developed. I feel like we're, we've really looked at every little scenario to try to have everything covered as much as we can. We even provided a letter for each school to put over on their own letterhead, so that they would have a letter to send home to the, to any students that they needed to notify. We, we've tried to look at every little thing to make sure that we had everything covered, so, and I wanted you all to see it.
Donnie, do you have any idea what the percentage of teachers and personnel are that have been vaccinated with the COVID vaccine?
I did have a few figures, but I don't have it with me here. And I know you're asking about personnel, and I don't, I don't have that. But I know one thing, I was alarmingly surprised at how few students have been vaccinated in our, in our district. It was much, much smaller than what I thought, but I, I really can't tell you about the personnel.
At one time Mitch, I think the number was around, close to two hundred, as far as out of our total employees. Now, that doesn't count substitutes and that type of thing, but as far as our, our normal daily employees, it was close to two hundred.
Which would be about forty percent, probably about over five hundred, or maybe down to forty percent.
Well, maybe do a count to your checks.
No.
How are we gonna handle it if a teacher does present symptoms and they're out? How are we gonna handle that? Just give the substitute like we would have stayed there?
Yeah, military service day.
Okay. Now that the vaccine was in place, last year, you remember the government providing funding for your employees if they had to be out? Well, that is no longer since there was vaccine, so... Unless something changes so far, that's a little while, correct?
Actually, without March, is that correct last year?
Anything else on the reopening plan? Everybody has that information? Let's go over the retirement buyout. What's on your mind, Ricky?
I just want to discuss the years, I just, you know, the clubs have different ideals, I just think as a board, we should decide that, I mean, the board's happy for you, they all are, I'll be with it.
Sure, sure. And, and I was the one that gave that number to the DSBA, I was, uh, well, I was just trying to make the best of what I had, so, they, they developed it to the specs that I referred to then. So, if it needs to be changed to five, or four, or three, however, but it doesn't matter to me, but I, I think every three years, that's a little soon. And this isn't a guaranteed buyout, this is just for a review.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if, if it needs to be reviewed in three years, that's, that's okay, it doesn't mean it's gonna be happening in three years, that's, that's the timeframe.
What did the buyer think of this time?
I don't have that number right now. At one time, it was over a hundred thousand. What, it'd been like around the hundred?
A hundred and ten.
Hundred and ten for this school year.
Got two positions there.
Yeah, I mean, that's the best I could, just right off the top of my head, about our numbers.
And, and to me, it don't matter the number of years, I mean, I said it before, and I'll say it again, I think we need to have something. Something we've got a consistent review versus, yeah, we're gonna look at it this year, no, next year we're not, at least we, I don't know, it don't matter to me if it's three, four, or five, as long as we've got a policy in place that says, it's the time.
And, and one thing Ms. White said, as we were discussing this, you know, this is an incentive for our employees. When I say an incentive, yes, it's an incentive for you to retire, but it's also an incentive for those that have stayed and may have taken, you know, two thousand dollars less on a year, twenty years. You know, it's, it's also a way of thanking your employees for staying with you, so...
I like it, I like it.
Yeah.
I just, myself, I'd like to see it stay with the three years, but that's just my, that's just me.
To look at it in three years, I said we have to do it, just look at it.
Thing in here, it says something, we looked at it every year, we're just not going to make a decision except every forty months.
Right. Yeah, you wouldn't make your decision, it'd have to be at least four years before you'd make a decision. That doesn't mean you have to make a decision. Because by the legal term looked at, every year when you incorporate your budget, then you're technically looking at it. So, but as far as an in-depth review, it would be every four years for you to be able to. Actually, off, that makes sense. So, um, what if, it doesn't, either way, it doesn't matter to me. I'm not necessarily a vote, but if we need to change it to three, maybe yes or no, we'd have that changed. I mean...
I'm, I'm good with either number, as long as they're consistent. Or do you, that way, Jared always know that it's gonna be this year, this shouldn't be, not sitting back and hoping we do it next year, hoping you do it the year after?
Bruce, what do you say, three or four or not aye?
It doesn't matter.
That's what I'm saying. Does that matter?
Would I say three? Carefully respond with me, I guess I'm more concerned about what type of, what type of gap we want to go by and determining how the director is willing to determine that percentage goes. And that, that's gonna let blank on this.
Well, it will, and that's where our financials come in, for what we offer, which will be the same financials as what we offer this year. And it'll have to be at least ten employees take the buyout, not interested in it, there'll have to be at least ten taking it.
Right, well, I guess what I'm saying, the policy, line number six, the policy should be used as a guide by the director of schools in making this determination, and then there's nothing there.
Right.
And so, we need, we need to put something there.
Right, we, we will, that's correct.
Modify that line.
You're correct, and, and that's that information that we use this year.
Okay.
So that's just the template.
Okay.
It, it'll be corrected for the final approval next month. But, it was left in inverted, that way in case there was any changes. We'll do it at once. That, that's, that same information, it'll be over fifteen years and so much more years' service at that point.
Question, do we know of any other programs that is gonna use this? Donnie, are you in contact with other districts, and that we can get a copy of theirs and see, see how they're going and...
I can check with some of the, the districts and see what they're...
Yeah, just to see how they modify this policy themselves, and maybe that would help guide us, maybe there's some nugget of information there that we're not thinking about, that might benefit us.
But unless, Ms. White said to her daughters, for the, for the online schools, they'll actually have a policy on this. So, but, the, as far as the line you're referring to, that'd be, they'll have that information as what we use this year, that's what we fill in that bottom part of it. So, and that will be prepared and sent out in your packet for the next meeting, for the second reading. And that will be changed to, at least three years, we'll be off, we'll change that to three.
And it might not happen, like I said, it might not be...
Right, it may not, it may not, because there may not be, may not be ten employees that retire. But, there'll have to be at least ten for it to be a very impactful benefit to us. So, uh, I've got that, Chris. Alright, now we're finished with that. Next thing I have, the fall district meeting is September the ninth, for anybody that'd like to go. I know myself and Bruce have signed up to go, it's a Thursday afternoon, Thursday evening, so if anybody needs it.
I don't see it in the old this year.
It's at Sparta, in the elementary. So. If, if anybody wishes to attend that, please get with Crystal, I'll get that set up. That's all I have. Bruce, you have any? Mike Hayes?
I got three.
Alright.
So, just to update, so number one, yesterday, met with Dr. Mason, his son Luke, Mr. Songstuffer, Mr. Taylor, Mr. Hudson was here. So let them know that we're interested in the twenty-three acre that we talked about last time. So, they're gonna go back, they're gonna have discussions on what, you know, financials and kind of let us know. He did ask for a layout of the survey, I emailed that to Luke today, after I got it from the survey. And they're just gonna get back with us hopefully in the next couple of weeks and kind of let us know. Very good meeting, I mean, they want to be good partners with us, and they brought up some ideas about, you know, in the future, that if we have some of that land that's left over and extra space, maybe looking from a CTE aspect and just say, you know, is there any grants out there for kids to do any kind of agricultural? Dr. Mason's grandson goes to a school in Kentucky, and they've got a program up there where they raise vegetables and turn them out and sell them at the farmer's market, and they actually employ students throughout the summer to work on that. So, some real good ideas coming back from them as well, so I think they'll be good partners with us on that. So, I'll update you when we get the dollar amount. The football stadium, everybody should have a copy of this in their packet. We met, and actually Coach Flatt, the new football coach, actually came over and met with us, I think Mr. Dahl, a few more, I can't remember who was here that day that we met, but this is what the two-level concession stand would look like. Coach Flatt actually gave some input, and at one point, we were gonna do half of the top as an event center, the other half as a visitor locker room. You know, he made the comment, if we're building something new, why don't our kids use it, and I fully agree with that. So, we looked at the option of bringing the weight room out of the high school and putting it in, and making it a weight room slash locker room, or a visitor locker room. So, it would be the weight room, visitors would still go in there and dress, and there was some concerns that brought up about visitors in there and tearing things up, and we openly had that conversation, and, you know, he was, you know, let us be aware that in the past, he's been changed in locker rooms that were weight rooms before, and if there's any issues, and those other schools are gonna be letting know that they will be taking care if there's any damage or anything like that. Or, you know, we'll let them work that out, but, you know, that weight room, the old weight room will be open, and if they elect to let them go in there and dress, I mean, that's fine too. But the, you know, kind of, we made that a little bit bigger, and that event center was a little bit smaller, but that event center's still eight hundred square feet. The event center, we told the architects that we'd like to have a sink, a dishwasher, and I think there's gonna be a heater that way if there's anybody that uses it, has food and cleans up. So I think that was the major changes on that. Then, I think there's a couple of questions that Mitch had asked me about, and if I forget them, ask me.
Well, people reached out to me from the community, and they were asking about their concern with us moving forward with this year's football program and playing at a remote location as opposed to playing locally. And like the quarterback club, the booster clubs and things would not be able to, to benefit from the funds that they would generate from it being held here locally, so...
And, and I think the architects comment to us is they, the, the condition those bleachers are in, they'd probably prefer us not to. That way, it eliminates our risk, you know, if we're gonna like to play one or two or three games here. And I think Dr. Holman can have kind of discussion with Mr. Melton. From my understanding, the five games that are gonna be played at tech, Coach Flatt kind of renegotiated a cheaper price than the original, so it's not gonna cost us as much to play there. I don't know if they're gonna be allowed to sell their own concessions there or not, I don't know that, but maybe Dr. Holman can find that out. And even talk, let Mr. Melton work with the football team and those organizations, and I do know the ones that are gonna be home, we get the gate money off of, so maybe a portion of that goes to each, because I know the band will lose, the basketball boosters will lose, you know, the quarterback club, I think they sell the books, whatever, you know, you call those, that's what, programs, they sell those. So, maybe something Dr. Holman can kind of get with Mr. Melton about, and I know it's gonna be a tough year, but...
And Mitch, while we're on that subject, what we've looked at, and when I say we, Dr. Holman, myself, and I know Crystal has with the budget, as, as we get closer to some of those numbers, we're gonna look at, we, we know a lot of those programs are gonna be losing money. We're gonna look at trying to, if we have money, not only as we can give money to schools, we'll try to give money to some of those programs for this loss. I mean, it's, it's not their fault, it's not our fault, it's unfortunate the way it is, so, depending on financially, we, we would like to be able to support those programs. So, as, as of right now, that's all I can do. as of right now, that's all I can say about that, because I don't have any figures, or it may not be any, I don't know, it'll be a couple of weeks before we get to that point, but we are looking into that.
And Mr. Chaney today said that, you know, the structural engineers and all the other engineers that are involved, that he's done a lot of work with them already, the next plan is for him to kind of come up and give us an update on the budget of, you know, everything we talked about, so as soon as I get that, we'll kind of get that in line. Then the last thing I got is I've talked to Mr. Mosley since he's been in position, talked about bus driver shortage, I think that's something every year that continues to face. Right now, they're short five bus drivers going into this year, and I just kind of threw this together based on some conversation I had with him, you know, and this, this is not a silver bullet answer, we kind of talked about insurance option to kind of get employees or to keep employees, and maybe looking at the daily rate, you know, talked to Noah today, and he drove through on his way to Shelbyville the other day, and they got signs posted, a hundred and twenty-five dollars a day for a bus driver, and I know those are different counties and away from us, but the Tennessee average starting pay for a bus driver is, was it sixteen?
Sixteen thousand.
Sixteen-five, word eleven seven. You know, I know there's some big counties in there, but there's some small counties in there also, so, you know, right now, we're about forty-eight hundred dollars off what the starting pay would be. Like I said, this is, this is in a silver bullet to fix it, and, and I, I know Mr. Chairman mentioned earlier that about the committees all went away, I'd almost like to see a committee or something put together to kind of talk about this, talk about the teacher pay, because I know, you know, if the state comes out and says, from a teacher aspect, hey, we're going to raise the minimum, well, guess what, every other county's raising the minimum, too, so you're, you're still in the same comparison as with everybody else, so I, I'd just like to see something put together to kind of sit down and look at, you know, all across the board, you know, the pay structure, for bus driver to teacher to, you know, we're relooking at this pay scale here, or redoing the formulas there, but I think it's something we really need to look at across the system.
I agree with that, too, because we have a study coming out showing that in just teacher pay, we're in the bottom six, so I'd like to see us come up with a comprehensive plan over the next five, ten years that we get our teachers back to the average of that, so we just have a committee or something set down and go over that, find a way that's budget-friendly, that we can raise our teachers to where they need to be, and, because that's going to be driving force for a lot of decisions for the next couple of years is pay, because it's not very budget-friendly to pay, counties around us are raising it, and.
All right, while we're talking about that, this is just an idea, before we get, before we get committee happy, I just, I don't like it, guys, before we get committee happy, let's do this. We'll have Dr. Holman, we'll have our budget director, we'll have our payroll personnel review this, kind of get a rough draft and plan, and we'll all sit down in a, in a work session, is it? Does everybody get with that? Because this, I mean, as far as the pay scale, we're starting school year this year, would be looking down the road into next year at best, I mean, if I think of that correctly, I mean, would be next year at best, so we, we have time, and that would give them time to research and study and things of that nature.
Yeah, I just, and from the bus driver perspective, and, you know, Mr. Mosley coming to roll, and, you know, he's short right off the bat, and I know this year, we had the buyout, and, you know, having to replace teachers, and it was a struggle, you know, getting teachers, and I just had a son to graduate, you know, luckily he stayed here, but there's twelve counties across that had interviews lined up and more money, and, you know, if we don't do something, and it's going to continue to get worse, and we've just got to be more competitive.
Yeah, I've had a lot of people tell me that they want to work in Overton County, but they can't financially, they, they just, they can't take that financial hit, they need to work in a neighboring county even though they still live here.
We're going to have to upper the pay scale because. Holman Hughes has said in the state of Tennessee, starting next year, there's forty percent of the teachers eligible for retiring, don't mean they're going to take it, but there's forty percent eligible, they could be a big, if a lot of goes out, there's going to be a big demand, and if you're not, you're not appealing, they're not going to come.
That's correct, so. Is everybody getting with that line?
Yes.
Because this is August, I mean, as long as we have some type of rough draft by the first year, that, that gives us a month or two to look at, so, you know, what we want to do and go forward.
We're going to have to kind of pan it, because fewer and fewer people are worried about education.
We for sure want to keep our, you know, we need to outsource our teachers, but we for sure want to keep our home students that graduate from here and love this county, we, we want them to be able to stay here and make good money and be at home where we want.
And I feel that this needs to be put out there, too, is that we're talking about being more competitive and all of that, and yes, we definitely want to do that, but it's not really trending upward in attendance either, and a lot of people need to understand that we get a lot of our money for our budget through the BEP, and that's based on how many students that we have, and if our enrollment falls, then we're not, we have to make that up, and it's not always easy making up the difference.
Sure. All right, anything else, Mike?
No.
Alan?
If you don't ask me, Mike, with the LA softball girls, the coach at the top, didn't he there about, will we might have some figure about having them work on the playoffs instead?
As far as where we'll be on our end of the year figures, it'll be the end of this month before Chris will give us the ballpark, our books will have to be closed out August thirty-first, so they'll be closed out at the end of this month, and so that information, ballpark information will be ready for you at the next meeting as far as where we'll be at the end of the year.
Thank you. That's good, thank you.
Good, all right.
And Diana, what Ricky was saying about softball, the, the, the band, the club, the softball, so I just wanted to mention that, I'm not sure if that's up there at the same time.
That's correct.
Yeah, and then to add on to what Mike said, I did have one thing I wanted to say, the state minimum salary schedule that you mentioned for certified personnel did, did increase, and we're in the process of adjusting that now, so just to add on to what you said.
All right, nobody has anything else? Work session will be over. Thank you.